April.
You're not quite on yet.
Oh, sorry.
No, you haven't.
No, we're good. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Today is the Wednesday, April 7th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. We'll call this to order. We're going to start with the ever-exciting discussion about the coronavirus crisis. So I'm going to read this statement. And if someone can record this, we could put this in on tape. All right. The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. When there are public hearings scheduled, notice of this electronic meeting is sent to all butters and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. Plastow Planning Board is utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. The link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box for the public to type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to the meeting to dvoss@plastow.com. All emails received by 3:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting will be read at the meeting. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be live streaming on the town's website. Okay. Dean, do we have any Zoom attendees at this point?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we will start with the roll call. Charlene, could you read the roll call, please?
Yep. Tom Alberki.
Here.
Tim Moore.
Here.
Laurie Mallett.
Yeah.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Max Ann Dobson.
Here.
Greg Tallon.
Yes, here.
John Blynn is on here. Is he?
Yeah, I think this is a good spot. So could you guys?
John Blynn is effectively still the alternate until we can vote on it on Monday.
Okay.
So when we vote on Monday, very likely it will be Bill Coy.
Was the... Okay. All right. I see. So you're going to vote. Bill is standing in.
It's a whole business. We can't do it through email.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we're going to recognize Bill Coy as the Board of Selectment alternate today? Great.
And John Cashel.
And Mr. John Cashel. Thank you. All right. So we'll get into it. Let's start with the meeting minutes from March 17th meeting. Has anybody looked at that? I have a few corrections, if anybody's got some. Yep. Yes, Greg.
So the change I have is on Page 2, Section 3.
Yep.
Where it says, "There were no seconds." Tim Moore did second his nomination.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
On the very bottom of that page, there's a motion to reappoint, which failed, and the abstained... The abstained vote is from Tom, not from me.
Okay.
And then there's one last minor thing on the second-to-last page. In the middle of the page, this is where it says, "13 Rose Avenue, Plastow." It should say, "Recommend anything from the BOS, not to the BOS."
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a couple. If anybody else has any questions. On the first page, below Committee Assignments, it says, "Laurie Mallett moved, second by Greg Tallon, to recommend Julian Kishka as Rockingham County Commissioner." Believe we have a Rockingham County Commissioner, and that's not Mr. Kishka. So we're going to look to clarify that as representative to the Rockingham Planning And I also have a question about the vote being 400. Which I believe we all voted. Is that correct? There were no abstentions? So that would be a 500. Does that make sense, everyone? Any others? Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll make that motion. We approve the minutes as amended.
Any seconds?
Seconded.
Karen Robinson, seconds. Tim Moore said this, said the amendment, the recommendation. Roll call.
Tom Alberki.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Laurie Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Greg Tallon.
Yes.
All right. So at this point in time, we can open up a continued continuation on the public hearing for continuation from February 17th. It was PB 21-02. I'll read this from the draft. It is, "The completeness of an application from Total Construction Solutions, LLC, care of Kyle McManus, for a subdivision that proposes a seven-unit, three-bedroom-each, detached residential condo development, PRD, with the public right-of-way. Subject parcel is 18.41 acres with 237.97 feet of frontage on Sweet Hill Road. The property is located at 44 Sweet Hill Road, Tax Map 62, Lot 29, in the MDR and LDR zoning districts. The owner of record is 44 Sweet Hill, LLC. If the application is found to be complete, the Planning Board may immediately conduct the public hearing." So at this point, we accepted the application as complete on the 17th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So just make note of that. This is a continuation of that hearing. You're free to speak. And I forget your name. Can you state it, please?
I'm Bill Hall with Civil Design Consultants.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
So as you stated, we were last before you in February, and we received some comments from the board at that time, and we've worked to address both those and comments that we received from Keach Nordstrom Associates. So what we have before you is a plan that, well, we believe incorporates all those revisions. We're not expecting approval tonight because we still have outstanding state permits that includes alteration of terrain, for which we have not received a review letter yet, and then subdivision approval, which is waiting for alteration of terrain. But to just go over a few things that we changed based on the recommendation of the board. As you recall, we discussed removing the Cape Cod berm from the left side of the cul-de-sac between Units 6 and 7, and we did that to provide easier snow storage on that side of the cul-de-sac. And also on Sheets C8 and C9, you could see that in the area behind and adjacent to Unit 6, we've incorporated approximately 1 to 1 and 1/2-foot deep swale going along the base of the slope to direct drainage down, adjacent to the septic system, down to the wetlands. So that'll make sure that everything gets captured and nothing goes on to the abutting properties on that side. So really, just here for an update and let you know where things stand and see if the board has any comments and concerns they want to address at this time. So with that, I'll open it up to you.
Okay. I understand you're looking for four waivers this evening. Is that correct?
If the board feels like they're ready to vote on those, then yes. But considering that we'd be coming back for another meeting, if you feel that it'd be better to wait, then we'd be fine with waiting as well.
Okay. Yeah, and I think I was seeking, you know, seek some input on that. I looked at that as, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg kind of scenario? Are we looking to... Are you looking to proceed after you get an answer on your waivers? Or are you looking to proceed regardless of whether we vote tonight or not?
Proceed in what way?
In terms of what you're going to present to us and some of the other additional plans.
Well, I think if the board feels like any waivers might be denied, then yeah, we'd have to change plans. So if you're okay with voting on them, then that's fine with us.
Any comments from the board at this time?
I would say, you know, as long as he's going to come back, we may as well hold off on the waivers.
Yes.
Probably nothing significant would change. But we do have some butters here, so it'd be good to hear from them probably as well.
Okay. Okay. Any other board comments?
Yeah, there was a couple of things here on the fire department response and the police department and the highway department responses. Is there any chance that we could have... Like, I would like the chief, Kenitzen, to come in, maybe? Because I really question that. Getting a fire truck down through there on what you've got down here now as a waiver. And also Danny from the highway department. I would like to hear from him, too. Even though we have the responses here, I would like an up-to-date one.
Okay.
If that's at all possible.
Yeah, I think my neighbors were thinking I was nuts last night when I had a tape measure out on my cul-de-sac, but...
Exactly.
So...
We had one, too.
So, you know, I measured the pavement course on my cul-de-sac. I feel like it's a little tight. I've watched the fire trucks go around it during the holidays. It's a 95-foot paved... It's actually grass in the middle, but it's 95-foot across. So we're looking at a 40-foot radius on the pavement, correct? So we're talking 80 feet?
Yes. Yep.
And so although the fire department did not necessarily... Well, he responded and said it was okay, but, you know, I feel like we should get some clarification just to double-check on that. Does anybody else have any feedback on that? Jim?
Well, I mean, what is it exactly we'd be looking for?
So we'll be... Yeah, we'll be voting on that waiver, and so, you know, just want to double-check and make sure that everybody approves, you know, that 40-foot radius on the cul-de-sac, which is, you know, that's 80 feet across.
So are we questioning the chief's decision? I'm not sure I understand. Is there something else, some other pieces of information that we need to give to the chief?
Yeah, I mean, that's the question. It's... Their response was brief, but I believe you said it was okay, so...
No.
That wasn't from the chief?
Yeah, it's from Scott and Nina.
Correct. Was that from the latest information?
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know. Was it the latest?
How big is the ladder truck? Can the ladder truck turn around down there?
Yeah, that was from Captain Fire Specter Scott Vezina.
Yeah.
Yep.
So...
That's why I was just asking if the chief would, you know...
Okay. Well, it's something we consider. If we don't vote on the waivers tonight, we can see clarification on that.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly send each of those, you know, highway fire and police short memo saying, you know, "We received your comments before, but, you know, the cul-de-sac seems small to us. Would you please reconfirm that it's of adequate size?" Or something.
That'd be great.
That would be good.
I agree. Thank you. One of the questions, I know you mentioned that there were some additional drainage capacities. Coming down that hill on Sweet Hill, you're going to fill up and to get the grade at the correct level. And then the talk is that basically at a 90-degree angle away from Sweet Hill, we should see the drainage move away from Sweet Hill and down into that basin. I also noticed that the hill does come down this way, right? From a 90-degree angle from where your road would be.
Yep.
So if we build that up, and then the butter mentioned it at the last meeting, has that been addressed in detail that there would be no drainage issues caused from that?
Yes. So as I had mentioned on Sheet C9, we did put that swale in at the base of the slope where we're building it up. So that will direct drainage down to the wetlands. And on the other side, where we're building the accessway down to the basin, the way that that's being graded out, it creates a natural swale going through there. So you can see down, like, the 200 contour, for example. That contour is sloping towards our accessway, which we're building up. So we'll have a swale up against that accessway going down into the basin. So that takes here both sides. And I believe Steve Keach had commented on this as well, had sent an email over saying that he did not see a problem with design, and he thoroughly reviews the plans. And I know he would have a comment on it if he thought there would be a problem.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Would the condo association be responsible to maintain the swale?
I believe they would be because that is going to be in the exclusive use areas or limited common areas and also within open space. So I believe that would fall under their purview.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know there is some concern with the highway department. Some of their feedback included, "Any curb anywhere is a challenge for the trucks. They're not using front loaders. They're using plow trucks, dump trucks. Anytime they deal with a curb, they're going to, you know, either damage their blade or damage the curb itself." And I think also their concern about sort of directing snow into one area, unless you're using a front loader, again, that's a challenge. So even though we've got some Cape Cod berm opening to the left, I think the ability to sort of direct that snow into that direction will be a challenge.
Yeah, so when we had met with Dan Garlandon on this, he had expressed to us that what they would likely do is the first 2 to 250 feet would end up in front of... Well, not in front of, but between Unit 7 and Sweet Hill Road. So he'd plow most of that in that direction. And then he'd probably end up with some snow between Units 5 and 6, and then some between 6 and 7. He did tell us that, you know, it depends on how it's built and when he gets out there, things might change because, like you said, a truck with a plow, it's going to be difficult to maneuver and get everything between 6 and 7. But at least from what I got from the meeting with him, he didn't seem like he had a big concern, and he thought there was room to put the snow out there. It's just going to have to be spread out between different places.
Okay. And then, yes?
I do have somebody who's raising their hand. It's an online participant. I don't hear...
Yeah, if that's in a butter, if they can just hold off till we ask for public comment.
Oh, okay.
And when we do that, we'll do that in a minute. We'll open up that. Does anybody else from the board have any other questions at this time or comments? Any concerns? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have Steve Keach's comment that the engineer was referring to. If you want me to read it real quick.
Sure.
This is from Steve Keach. "Based upon my review of the drainage analysis and resulting design prepared by the applicant's consultant, as long as the infrastructure improvements are ultimately constructed in strict conformance with the current project plans, I am confident abutting property owners will not experience excess drainage. Please feel free to share this remark to members of the planning board to the extent appropriate." And that's from Steve Keach.
Okay. Thank you. Good to note. And then, and I know Dan also expressed concern about the right-of-way and the utility locations. So he did ask for it to be as far away as possible, but still within the right-of-way?
Yes. That is not captured on this revision, but we will get it the next go-around because I'm sure we'll have some comments to address with AOT.
Okay.
So there will be another revision, and we'll include that.
All right. Any other questions from the board? It's a good spot, I think, to open it up to public comment. So anything from the live audience? All right, sir, if you could just hold on one moment, we're going to listen to the Zoom question first. Please state your name and address and ask your question, please. Are they unmuted?
He does not have his hand raised anymore, so I don't know if he was intent on speaking, but he had his hand raised earlier.
Okay.
But I did turn to him and said, "Oh, opportunity."
All right. Participant, if you'd like to ask a question, please re-raise your hand, and we'll address it. And for now, we getting it back?
Yeah. There he is. Good hand.
He's going to need to... Okay. Go ahead.
Joe, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your full name and address, please.
Okay, it's Joe Tadoff at 1 Sequoia Lane.
Yep.
I believe it's... I think it's 6380, my lot.
Okay.
Yep.
My question is, last time I spoke to you, I had some issue that two houses were going to be abutting mine. Have they rearranged the lots and the houses? Because it looks now there's only one back there.
So the layout is the same since the February meeting. However, we did come in for a preliminary meeting with the board where the houses were further back, and it was a different arrangement. I'm not sure if that's what you're referencing, but since February, this has been the same layout.
Yes. So the ones... All right, so the one I'm looking at, where Lot 6380, there's really, like, only one house behind it now, or it used to be two.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Can you tell me how far that house is off of my border? Is it 800 feet or...
I don't have a scale in front of me, but it appears to be in excess of 100 feet, probably approaching 150 feet.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's been a positive change for myself, so I guess that's really my only question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
We have another... Someone in the audience? Do we have a microphone we can access?
My name is Lawrence Ordway. I live at 3 Sequoia Lane. My question's pertaining to the amount of fill that is going to be brought into the property. Having lived in that area for some 40-some-odd years, I remember when that property, 44 Sweet Hill Road, was an open field. And my recollection is, is the slopage wasn't dramatic, but it was significant. And I'm concerned where there is some 45,000 yards of fill going into that property. And not being an engineer, I can't really understand what the slopage is going to be. But I want to make sure that the board considers that there's enough of... What's the right word? There's enough of a grade so that the fill that they're adding to that property doesn't wind up in my backyard.
Okay. Duly considered. Yeah, and I think that if this helps, the initial discussion had a broader footprint with this project, and one of the things that we were concerned about was the amount of fill. And so the project has come back to us and brought a smaller footprint to us. They still need to meet the minimum grade on that road, but it did reduce the fill. We addressed what kinds of fill, things like that, because we want to make sure it was environmentally friendly and all these types of things. The other question going along with that was something we addressed earlier, which is, what is the drainage issue potential there? And Mr. Cashel did give a response from the town engineer and did explain how they've looked at the drainage and feel comfortable, confident that it's going to be adequate. Any other comments, Bill?
Yes, if I may. The majority of what we're proposing is a 3:1 slope, so 3 feet horizontal for every 1 foot vertical. And while it is a steep slope, it's about 33%. When it's properly stabilized, then you won't have erosion issues with runoff going down it. And properly stabilized just means grass is growing and you have a thick mat on there.
Okay. Any other board comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Tallon?
A question. Bill, what's the minimum buffer between this property and the butters? Is there a minimum amount?
50 feet, yes, is the minimum. Yep.
Yeah, I see. I'm guessing from looking at the map, there's a lot of places where it's a lot larger than that.
Yes. That's correct.
Thank you.
150.
Any other board questions? I think this would be a good spot to consider whether or not we want to look at the waivers, introduce them, and vote on them. I am in agreement with Tim that I think that if we push that up to the next meeting, I think that makes the most sense. Mr. Cashel?
Mr. Chairman, when they're waiting for the subdivision approval and the terrain approval, those are really technical issues that they have to address any of the outstanding issues with the state, which in all likelihood, they're going to be able to accommodate. These particular waivers, if the board does vote on them, it helps to facilitate the final plan draft, so that when we do see them the next time, they'll probably be in a situation where there'll be final drawings as opposed to waiting for these waivers. These particular waivers aren't going to hinder what the state is reviewing in regard to the plan, so...
Yeah, so are you saying that you...
You know, the cart's not going before the horse with these waivers.
Yeah. Yeah.
If the board, what would happen, and it would assist in the final drawings, if the board wanted to this evening, then they could go towards designing the final plans, and they'll get the state approvals probably. It's just a timing thing relative to the state approving.
Sure. And I think I mentioned that earlier. That was my question, is were they seeking to get these waivers so they could move in that direction?
And, Mr. Chairman, can I just bring up to speed everybody? That it was last fall that they came in, and the developer did work with the planning board pretty extensively, and they delivered a plan that the board wanted to see, and that was the least amount of impact on the property and not overdoing it with the amount of lots that are being created. So this is an open space development where the developer worked with the planning board to create the least amount of environmental impact, while at the same time, they're really creating a development that creates the least amount of impact possible with the abutters. And one thing I did go over with Steve Keach leading up to this meeting, you know, this board wants to be absolutely sure that the runoff with this particular development is not going to spew off into the abutting properties. So, and it's really important, pre-development versus post-development. And Steve Keach took to heart and, with his expertise, really looked at the plans, and he wouldn't have put this particular statement in writing unless he really believed in it. And he believes in it through engineering practice.
Sure, thank you. I think that, you know, we've gotten to a point where really the road is the question. So we know that the waivers are there. The right-of-way is requested at last, the pavement's requested at last. There are some concerns by the highway department. We, I would like to confirm with the police and safety that we've gotten to, you know, that they have noted the width of that road. I know that it was responded to, but I would feel more comfortable with the chief's response. That's really...
Do you want them here, or do you want a reiteration of what they've already put in writing?
Yeah, I think that, you know, some of you have some more experience with this at this point. What do you think is the best avenue? Tim, do you have some advice on that?
I would think just a reiteration of what they said. Unless, I mean, unless we have some real technical questions for, you know, any of the three, if it's just, I think it's more like, we noticed that, you know, the cul-de-sacs are smaller. We got your letter or memo saying it was okay, but we'd just like to reconfirm that with you. And so just a, you know, simple reaffirmation would be fine.
Yeah, and I think, and I think that, you know, seeking this to be a town road, we talk about the pre-development work and being studied, you know, and then it becomes a town road, or we then have a road that's not the standard right-of-way, standard pavement size and drainage, and do, you know, who's responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep and the repairs and any other things like that, so. Yes, Max?
Yeah, I think if they were to restate what they put in the packet, that would be helpful, but it's also public safety. Can the ladder truck?
Can I stop you for one second? Can you move the, yes, thank you.
I think it's a matter of public safety to actually have in writing or have them tell us that the ladder truck can go down there. I think that's a concern, that it might not be able to turn around in the end. I know my road is a cul-de-sac, but the trash company has to back all the way up and down. They can't turn around. So it is a concern.
Bill, do you have any other comments? Do you feel like, you know, if we held off on the waivers, it would pose a major imposition on your plans?
I don't believe it would.
I'm Kyle McManus. I'm the developer. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but we did sit with both the fire department, two members of the fire department.
Yeah, could you, could you state your name and?
Kyle McManus.
And you, developer, correct?
Yeah, developer. So we did sit with both the planning board, we sat with the planning board first, but then we sat with the fire department and the highway department and went specifically over these things. We actually changed the cul-de-sac according to both fire department and highway department requests, so that they felt like they could satisfy the equipment needs and things like that. With the road and the request for a variance was kind of a combination of what the planning board request was and what the fire department and the highway department were comfortable with. So, while I understand that you're asking about, can we get them to restate it? The way that the design came out was from a meeting that we sat with them and said, are you comfortable with this design? We sketched, we made accommodation, we did do that. The reason that I'm asking and want to make sure is that if we can get these waivers, it is going to satisfy the final design at a much better rate for us once we get the alteration of terrain. Any of their comments?
Yeah, so you're saying that you actually did sit down and have a meeting, or there was just some communication?
No, we sat down, had a meeting with both fire and highway.
And you know who the representatives were at that time?
Garlington was there, and I don't recall who was from fire.
Yeah, there were two people from fire there, and we met at their public safety office.
Okay.
I mean, it was a scheduled meeting. It was myself, Bill, and Charlie were there.
All right.
And it was, and it was before the last set of meeting, the last set of plans was done.
Okay. Yeah, I think they didn't quite state in their responses that, you know, some information about the meeting would have been helpful to have, you know, some of that information, but it seems like a very sort of, yeah, we're okay with it email that we have. Mr. Cashel, you have another?
Yes, please.
Nothing much? What's going on?
Mrs. Anello, I think we need to mute maybe our participant.
I have. The thing with him is, you should email him.
Unless we have some good info, we can listen.
He's awesome.
Thank you.
At least he's not in his garments.
Yeah, at least he didn't have some choice words for us. Mr. Cashel?
Yes, thank you. So we do have a number of emails from Mr. Garlington and from Chief Mullen, and that's in the staff report dated 1/21/21.
I think it's in the back of the waiver packet. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's way in the back.
Yep.
And it does state here, this is from Dan. One of his memos states, Dee, as you know, my outlook when accepting a new street in town, how to maintain it, I have no issues with the cul-de-sac radius, no issues with the pavement width within the cul-de-sac, but I might have an issue with the right-of-way width, because it is only, the only way to allow us to plow and push back our streets is to know where exactly they can put the snow. His concern is that within the right-of-way of the roadway, not the turnaround, that he may be pushing snow onto people's property. If, I remember having a discussion about this particular issue in the last February meeting, and that was the last meeting that I was here. I was absent, the March 17th meeting. But there's a seven-foot distance from the edge of pavement to within the right-of-way that they can push snow. Anything beyond that seven feet off of the roadway, that becomes the property owner's property. And to alleviate that and trying to maintain the width of the roadway as it's been designed, perhaps, and it was discussed with the developer, if they would be willing to put an easement on the front lawn areas of these particular lots. Now, in my experience with a roadway such as this, seven feet of width off of the roadway edge of pavement usually handles the amount of snow. Seven feet is, you know, two feet beyond the sidewalk width, which would typically be five feet, so.
Yeah, Bill, where would the utilities get placed if they sort of met Dan's request? And I think that's, you know, if he's coming up and there's, you know, the box is coming out of the ground and his plows are pushing snow and damaging those utilities, that's a big concern.
Yeah, so on Sheet C4A, we're providing a 15-foot-wide roadway construction and maintenance easement to the town. So in addition to the 35-foot right-of-way, we're going to have 15 feet on either side of that, for a total of 22 feet on either side off the pavement, where that's actually going to be an easement granted to the town, and that's where we're going to put our utilities when we revise the plan, so that they're well outside of the paved width of the road. So the intent of that easement is to provide a place for utilities, where the utilities can be maintained, and also for the snow storage.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Karen?
I guess I have a question. That was February 4th, the letter that you read there. This one is March 23rd that I have here, and it did mention, again, asking that any and all utilities be located as far off the edge of pavement and still within the row. The areas labeled "snow storage" sometimes don't angle in a direction on the cul-de-sac. They're not always going to be practical. We plow snow with trucks, not front-end loaders, like you said, that do not, sometimes they don't angle in a direction that puts the snow in those areas. So he was looking at, I'm not sure of this, but they might require four inches of pavement, not three. 2.5 of the base and 1.5 of the top. Now, if you have any questions, and he said, email me. Now, this is March 23rd after the February meetings, and I didn't see an answer back. That's why I was looking for that. That's what I was asking for.
Yes. So we had revised these plans before we received that, so that's why they didn't make it onto the set. So we will be relocating the utilities outside of the paved width as he's requesting. And then I did look at the subdivision regulations, I believe that's where it is. The pavement thickness is three inches in there, so it's three, not the four that he had stated.
Oh, okay. He thought it might require four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if he was just saying the regulation's three, but I wonder if we need four.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure. I wasn't reading it that way. We could ask him on that.
That was my main concern, was, you know, asking him the final.
Tim, is it customary to have the fire chief respond on that question that we had? Or is it, have we accepted response from another representative like Mr. Vesna is listed on here? What's your typical?
Yeah, I mean, I think Scott is the deputy chief, so, you know, he's certainly a duly qualified person to respond.
Okay.
I'm sure the request was sent to the fire department, and the chief would have chosen who was going to respond. And so, yeah, I mean, I think you can accept Scott's comments as being the fire department's comments.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like on the, yes, Max?
Yeah, I just noticed, there's no date on this, so I'm just curious what plan they signed off on saying that it was okay and submitted this, because it doesn't have a date on it.
Most of them are February.
I don't know if we need that for housekeeping to cover what we're doing.
That would be the fire response? Is that what you're looking at?
Yep. Everything else is dated February 9th.
When did you present the waiver information to the fire? Was that at that meeting?
Yeah, so when we had that first meeting, we presented what we were thinking we were going to do, and then we developed the plans to submit to the planning board. So it would have been, I'd say, probably six or eight weeks before the February meeting, so sometime in early January, late December.
Okay. So we can say that comfortably that the waiver requests match the information that was presented at that meeting?
Yeah, they've definitely seen this plan with the cul-de-sac as it's proposed.
Well, I guess the question at this point, we're at that point where we've got to discuss if we want to vote on the waiver requests. Is there any additional input? Mr. Moore, do you have any insight on that? I know that you mentioned that you thought it was okay to wait. I'm comfortable with that, but we can see if we're...
Just to respond to the, you know, I mean, you can see the fire department's response isn't dated, but if you look at Dee's February 9th email that she sent out to the building inspector and the two chiefs, and then their responses follow that email, so it would have occurred at least after February 9th. So, yeah, in terms, I mean, normally we just make a motion to grant the waiver. I don't think there's anything that would preclude us from granting the waiver conditioned on a positive response from police, fire, and highway.
Yeah, that's the big question.
Sort of complicates things a little bit, but...
Sure.
If they get positive response back tomorrow or early next week, then they're good to go. And if they get a comment that's contrarian, requires some rearrangements, then they can react on that.
Yeah, I think that we would push it off if we think that there's additional information to be shared. You know, our concerns are going to be there no matter what, if we have any, so, you know, you're right, I think that the putting a condition upon reaffirmation, you know, from the fire chief may help with that. So I think that we could put the...
I just, you know what, can I just put something into perspective here? Because I don't think anybody likes to be questioned about something they've already put in writing.
Yeah.
Although this doesn't have a date, I think his intention is correct in what he wrote. After review of the plans submitted to the Plastow Fire Department inspectors, there, I'm just reading what it says, there are no objections to the submitted waiver, waivers request from the developer. And that's signed Captain Fire Inspector Scott DeHanso, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it would have...
If we start questioning what they've already put in writing, what are we doing? Just spinning people's wheels for no reason?
Sure. I think that, you know, if there was information about the meeting and some clarification on the dates, I think that would help our, our feedback, you know, on that. And I think what we're trying to do is what's right for the town. So at the end of the day, I think it's okay to question it and talk about it. Yes, Max?
I think it's our job as elected officials to do our due diligence, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I might have the history wrong, but didn't we build a fire station where a fire truck couldn't fit in? Something like that?
I don't know the answer to that.
That happens all the time.
I'm just saying, if we can nip it in the bud before it happens and we know that there's an issue that can be resolved, doesn't that make more sense?
Well, I think at this point, we're just going to go, have to go with the information that was presented, as mentioned. I would like to have seen some better detail about the information that was shared, and perhaps we can, we can, you know, discuss how that presents itself in the future. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment. This is, this is a perfect example of when plans are reviewed for a number of months and, you know, there's a decent break in between reviews, you know, it's hard to remember, you know, who said what, and, you know, you do have to refer back to what has been put in writing, because a situation that we're dealing with right now, we have new members, a new chairman, you know, no one's memory is going to be complete on this. There's no way. So we do have to, you know, remind ourselves by reading what has already been put in writing and, you know, try to create as much continuity of thought from meeting to meeting. Otherwise, we'll still be dealing with this in August, and what will happen, a month will go by the next time we're dealing with it. We'll just keep on going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Sure. Duly noted. Yes?
So one comment, I think that would be helpful.
So, one comment, I think that would be helpful, would be to communicate back to the fire department to date their memos. I mean, that's a reasonable thing to request, and I would have clarified this right off the get-go.
Yeah.
Other than that, I feel very comfortable that they have looked at the plans, that they have met with the organizations, that we basically have their agreement that they can live with this particular plan. And I see no reason why we shouldn't oppose approval of these waivers.
And Mr. Chairman, in what you're saying, I don't have any opposition thought or whatever of just continuing this hearing without voting for the waivers, you know, and so for the next meeting, they can do what they have to do with the fire chief, with Mr. Garland and just iron this all out and come back, you know, with a plan and reiterations that that's what's necessary, but to not end up being stalled out on trying to come up with a decision on this one way or the other.
Sure, and I agree, and I appreciate Greg's response, which is what I was saying, which is, we don't have the information, so it would be helpful to have clarification, and if there's information shared, that there was a meeting with some, you know, feedback on that, that's helpful. We do know that you need to come back anyways, correct?
That's correct.
We know that you owe us condominium documents, I believe, and some of the other state and DES requirements. Is there anything else that's outstanding? I saw through the staff report. What's that?
I believe the condo documents were suspended.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so all we have outstanding would be alteration of terrain and subdivision, and those go hand in hand, so...
Laurie, did you have a question? Comment?
I forget what I was going to ask. It'll come to me, but...
All right, because we're going to do this again.
Oh, I, okay.
You have the floor.
So, I don't have a problem with, you know, that the road is going to be narrower. My concern is the size of the cul-de-sac with the ladder truck going down there, and also the question of snow storage, because when I see people plow the road, it just goes here, there, and everywhere, and I can't imagine we're going to hire a contractor to come in and we're going to specifically have him put this snow where they want it, and then what happens if they rip up the grass and, you know, people are very particular about landscaping? Is the town then going to be responsible to come in and loom it and seed it? And so, yeah, I would like to hear back from the fire department and from the highway supervisor.
Thank you. I think we're at a point where, in the interest of time, yes, we want to help you move your plans along. We don't want to be a hindrance, we want to work together, and certainly, I don't think that anybody thinks that there is any attempt at doing something incorrectly or wrong, but you may not necessarily get the response that you would like for your waiver request. So I'm more comfortable pushing this off to our next meeting. Is that something we need to vote on, Tim, pushing off waiver vote? Or we just...
We would just continue with...
Just continue to the next hearing?
Yeah, date specific.
Yeah, and so, within that, we will ask for some specific information to the highway, and we may ask just for some clarification with fire and safety, and I think that will help us vote and make a better determination. Any additional comments?
Well, I guess, just a consensus to make, other than making sure that highway and fire departments are comfortable with the cul-de-sacs, are there, is there any other objections from the board? So we don't want to come back in a couple of weeks...
Yep.
Saying, you know, all the departments are fine, but now we have some objection. So if everyone's comfortable with the cul-de-sacs, as long as we get the approval, then we should, we should be good to go.
Yeah, is there any other comments or concerns? Laurie duly noted that if the road is a town road, who is responsible for damage to any of the drainage systems, to the personal property beyond the right-of-way, things like that? So I think that's a consideration as well. Yes?
One thing, originally it was proposed as a private road, and the highway department actually asked that it be considered as a public road. So I don't know if that makes a difference on that, but that was, it was done as a public road on the highway department's request.
I believe that was when highway thought that these were going to be single-family homes, not condos, not with a condo association. That's what I, that's what I had heard.
I don't know. I don't, because I don't think we ever did it as single-family homes when we had brought it in that far. I don't recall exactly. I'm just, again, putting it out there that when we did it as, when we did it as a private road, it was requested that it be a public road. So for whatever two cents, if that helps to, obviously, the waivers aren't going to be voted on this evening, I understand that. I'm just, so that you're getting the questions correctly asked and understanding where and why some of the things were done, because we did take the time to talk with the planning board and the highway and fire to make sure we were doing what they would feel would be in the best interest of them.
Sure. No, I appreciate that, and that's, that's good information, and Laurie also put up a good point. The plans did change, so we can clarify where that...
Yep.
Where the delineation is. I do appreciate your patience. The board did change through elections, so, again, we appreciate your support in answering our questions. Some of it may be duplicated, some of it may be a little bit tedious, but we're here to support you and the town. All right. Do we have any more business on this application beyond continuing? I believe we have to name, set a date for the continuation, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so that leaves us to our next meeting, or we have a workshop meeting scheduled for... Would you be available to come back for our meeting in two weeks? Is that enough time for you for...
I'm at the 21st. I'm not, I'm out of the country.
I think it's...
Couple of weeks from May.
Yeah, I think it's unlikely that we'd hear back from alteration of terrain in two weeks. It's possible, but I think it's unlikely.
Okay.
Okay.
May 12th or May 26th? Excuse me.
May 5th. 5th or 19th?
Going second and fourth, that's another place. 5th or the 19th?
Typically, our first meeting is held for workshops. I'm comfortable putting this in on the 5th if you, because I think that, you know, we have some actions to take at that point, so it's up to you. You have, either one is an available option, 5th or 19th of May?
I'd say the 5th, and if we don't hear from alteration of terrain, then we could always continue that.
Any other business with this application? All right. Hit my gavel. Does that conclude the public hearing comment? Are there any other comments from the public?
We should clarify the meeting on the 5th, because it might be an over-thing or not?
Yes, sir, it's a continuation of this hearing. It will be public. I do not believe there will be any rebutter notices, but by virtue of stating the date at this meeting, it is a public comment, so...
Yep.
You're welcome to join us and send any questions along as well.
There won't be any rebutters notices?
Yes, there will, yes, there will not be rebutters notices, but by virtue of stating at this meeting the date, the notification, this is the notice.
Mr. Chairman, one other comment too, as we're going along. We don't have to do a roll call vote tonight because we're all here. Correct?
That's right.
I think that's correct, yes.
Yep.
It's only when one of the board...
It's a habit formed, it's formed over the last year, but we don't have to do it anymore.
Yeah, it's only when one of the voting members is, is coming in remotely that you have to...
Or if you want to do it.
Well, you can always do it if you want to, yes.
If you feel like you need to do it.
No, thank you. I'm procedurally, if there's something we need to jump in on?
I've had many, many roll call votes, and the fewer or more I have, the better I will like it.
All right.
It's a habit.
All right, does that conclude our public hearing at this point on that application?
I think so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. All right. Let's keep this moving along, I think that's the goal for all of us. We did add some discussion about the zoning warrant article results. We did not discuss that at the last meeting, so I think this is a good spot to just talk about them, what the results were, and what we think as a board, the impact of these changes will be. Obviously, we've drafted a lot of these, or all of these, so just, I'll quickly go through these. If anybody has any comments, please feel free to discuss, and, again, if we have thoughts on what, how they may impact some of our actions, we can address that. So the first one was Z21-1, that was simply a definition on the personal service business. That was voted yes. Is there any comments on that? I think definitions are not that exciting. Z21-2 is dumpster placement. I think we all agree that that puts some limitations on how and where dumpsters are utilized on properties. Any comments? That was also a yes. And then Z21-3, that was also voted yes. That was the Danville Road overlay district. And, Tim, that was what, one of the ones you authored, correct?
Yeah, it was just the housekeeping to put the name of the overlay district in the list of zoning districts.
Okay, yes, so mostly housekeeping.
It's a bookkeeping kind of item.
All right, great. C21-4 also voted yes. That was a definition. We added the function hall definition. Was the main focus of that because we just didn't have it defined, and we wanted to make sure it fell within some sort of category if someone so chose to put in a function hall?
Yeah, I think it was, since function halls are not listed as a permitted use in any of the zones, we have a few of them, obviously, that are kind of grandfathered. So this was more on the defensive side, I would say, by offering a definition, it's, and somebody makes a proposal that falls clearly under this definition, then you, it's easy to say that's not a permitted use.
Okay.
As opposed to, you know, some of the, some of the permitted uses in C1 are a little bit subjective, so this was kind of to clarify, make one that's more objective rather than subjective.
All right, any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You may want to comment on the vote, because these were so overwhelmingly voted in favor. I mean, to me, it expresses that this board is on the right track with, you know, the vast majority of those people that came out and voted.
Yep, that's a good point. Yeah, for that one, it was 598 to 139. You know, you'd almost think that we should have the same number across the board, at least total, which we don't, so I find that a little bit amusing. But what that does...
Dumpster one, really?
Yeah.
That was the top vote.
Yeah, they really hit the spot on that one. Yeah, if we each, if we each take ownership of one of these amendments, we can, you know, have bragging rights over whose was best. All right, so the next one was signs in the village. Again, I think that was essentially where it can be used and the definition thereof. Again, it's defensive position, I believe, correct? That one was a vote of 537 to 179. Moving on, this was the fee schedule, Z21-6, simply a fee schedule, getting it out of our purview and onto, was the Department of Building and Safety, correct? Housekeeping, 570 to 141. And then Z21-7, natural resource protection definition, that was simply, that was 557 to 162. I think that was more redefining wetlands, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it kind of reorganized that whole section, but the primary reason to do that was to add more references to the RSAs throughout the ordinance and to make some better definitions. Gets us set up, I think this year, Conservation Commission is going to ask us to support...
Okay.
So this, set, kind of set that up, so it would easily be integrated with the upcoming work.
On to Z21-8, C1 mixed-use overlay district. Again, thanks to Tim Moore for authoring this, John Cashell's input as well. We, I think that the board felt this was a positive thing for the town. In essence, would allow for mixed-use developments, including some condos and apartments and the such, in terms of a mixed-use development. This one was voted in 532 to 178. It was only one vote less on the negative side than the signs amendment, so people really didn't like the signs amendment, apparently. Any commentary on that one?
No, it's good.
Yeah, it's really this one and the next one, Z21-9, C3 district, thanks to Karen Robinson. Hard work on that one, establishing new zoning. Establishing new zoning beyond, it was the old Sanborns Candy intersection up to Kingston. So I think that these are the two are the main ones for us. They provide some sort of an impact and direction as to what this board can and try to do as we look at the master plan and things like that. So, you know, I think we want to keep in mind what these mean for us and what these mean for developments within our, with our town. Any comments on those?
The last three as being really important. I think the last, you know, the changes for the wetlands, you know, invaluable to get that language changed in the zoning ordinance, and hats off to Tim, that was a late entry, but you were really on the right track with the support of the voters, for sure.
Yep.
Again, as well as all of these have been. But, you know, I really want to comment on the last one, the C3 district. I think that is such a perfect transition zoning district, you know, getting out of that, that C1, which is the highly intensive commercial district, and you're transitioning out of town, that main retail commercial sector, and you're transitioning out of it. You know, and I think this, the C3 really provides for that transition.
I agree.
The type of zoning you really want to have in a town.
No, I agree, I think it puts some, it really fits for that, that area, like you mentioned, so, thanks again to Karen. And Tim Moore, recognition for authoring the voter's guide.
Yes.
So I don't think anything, anyone else could hear could do it.
No.
So thank you very much, we appreciate that. So any other lasting questions? Like I said, and I think John just said this as well, the last three are the important ones, set the stage for what we're looking to do as a board and what, how this town might develop in the future, so, some important ones.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that on the voter's guide, DeVos did quite a lot of that cutting and pasting, so she really put a lot of that together.
Good point.
Kudos to her.
Didn't mean to exclude Dee, absolutely. We know Dee is helpful in all of this, so thank you very much, DeVos. All right, so we'll move on to the next piece, which is, so what are our goals for 2021? And so that's a good transition into the master plan. I know when I was an alternate, we looked at it, we talked about it, but we didn't necessarily set any sort of standards for what our next steps were. So I think it's a good time, we want to revisit this, but I also don't want to just come into a meeting, talk about it, and then three months later realize that we talked about it three months ago and that was that. So, but we also don't want to extend ourselves. So what's our, what are our goals for the next, what are we, 11 months, 10 months away to the next town vote? And how can we positively impact the town? And I think the master plan is really what we want to focus on. So I just went through on the, I highlighted the planning board responsible agency items, and I highlighted the 2021 dates. So to me, that means these are the ones we need to work on. So to me, that means these are the ones we need to work on. So if you go down to NR4, it is incorporate green infrastructure design requirements for stormwater management to the site plan review.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
I thought it was getting a little dark in here myself.
I was falling.
Saving energy.
I was wondering if I had my glasses on.
Yeah, well, now we'll have to wake up.
Yeah. What's my good side? We got to figure that out. All right, so stormwater management and green infrastructure design. You know, you guys are going to have a little bit more input on this type of stuff, but my question was the who, how, and when, and, you know, how we get to these, these goals of working on that. We don't necessarily need to go and say on every item that this is the priority, let's figure everything out today, but I think if we, we look at some short baseline of what we want to do, and then go down and sort of figure out what our highest priorities are, what's, what do we start on now, what do we start on later, that kind of thing.
I think on this one, you often hear in some of the, some planning literature, low impact development, and so that's exactly what this is. It says green infrastructure, but it's the low impact. And so tonight, we saw just an example of that, where we asked a developer to put in a drainage swale rather than hard infrastructure like a curb, and then you've got to, you know, that pushes the water down, then you need catch basins and a lot of man-made infrastructure, whereas a drainage swale does it naturally without all the extra infrastructure. So there are a number of techniques like that, something that sort of talked about off and on over the last probably four or five years, but I think this is probably a good year to focus on that a little more.
Would you say that we should develop some guidelines on green infrastructure and that basically when an application comes in, they're handed that, that data sheet or whatever those guidelines are, so they understand sort of what the, what direction we'd like them to plan for?
Well, I mean, I don't think it's, it would be, it probably would be a change in our subdivision and/or site plan review regulations. So we'd want to make some proposals, you know, have a public hearing and incorporate the changes.
Okay.
Can I add something to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So when an applicant, they come in, you know, and they start talking to Dee, and we start organizing for, you know, initial meetings to go over, we're always trying to tell them that your best bet is to come in with conceptual plans and let the planning board work with you on what they want to see, you know, just so they're not spending all outdoors on definitive subdivision plans and say, you know, we, we probably know one or two developers that are still designing standard subdivision plans, and there's nothing more of an impacting design than a standard subdivision. And, you know, nationwide, they're really trying to get away from that stuff. It's so, you know, immediate post-World War II type of planning, and, you know, nationwide, you have most of your flooding conditions caused by impervious surfaces, way more than what's called for or needed. And, you know, so as, as a nation as a whole, the whole thing, and especially a town like this, where most of the roadways in this whole region, I should say, New England, it's it's sheet flow primarily, you know, urban core communities, yeah, they have to put that stormwater drainage system in with the catch basins and curbing and all that, you know, and there's steep roadways that you can't get away from designing drainage infrastructure with the catch basins, just to control it so it doesn't become an erosion issue. But, you know, when you have, you know, 3%, 4% grade roadways, 2% grade roadways, most of the time, sheet flow off of the edge of pavement into grass swales where appropriate or stone swales when necessary, that, that is the way to go, to create, you know, a more low-impact development. And that's really the way we should be trying to go. And we tell developers, come in with their conceptual plan to the planning board, and we'll go from there. Now, this practice worked really well, I thought, with, with Sweet Hill, this particular small subdivision. You know, they did produce, and they were willing to produce what we asked them to do. We're still working out some of the cakes, but, you know, that's a pretty good review of what the planning board is able to do, working with developers to create these low-impact developments. We're dealing with one that is trying to be standard right now, and we're still wrestling with them staff-wise before they come into the planning board. I don't think this board, you know, wants to see a standard subdivision, you know, unless for some reason it's absolutely necessary. Because the whole idea, let's try to keep as many trees standing, you know, not put down any more pavement than it is needed to service the proposed use, and, you know, make sure we do talk with the fire chief and, you know, and Dan, and, you know, just make sure they're comfortable. But those are, you know, two individuals in every community that for years and years, they want more pavement. It's easier for them to do things, you know, and, and not have to back up or whatever. But, you know, what's really the important goal? The important goal is to try to keep as much of our environment, least amount of impact than what we've been practicing in the past, that, you know, create so much, so much added flooding that doesn't need to take place, and that's really what we're trying to do, is to stop all this flooding from taking place. The only way we can do that is to reduce the footprint.
Yeah, so knowing that's the goal, what can the board do to help that process, right? So when a standard subdivision comes in, how do we say this, these are our site plan review requirements?
It's in the regulations already, though.
Okay.
You know, it's in the regulation. And they like doing it too, because it's, it's less costly for them to build roadways. It's less, you know, they're, they're putting down less pavement. That equals cost savings. But, you know, what we did here, you know, this was an elongated subdivision. It was to the advantage of the developer to stay as close to Sweet Hill Road as possible. It was just a, it was a huge cost savings to him, but look what we did. We created the least amount of impact, environmental impact on that property, and added benefit, there weren't as many upset abutters, and I even think the one abutter this evening seems to be pretty satisfied. You know, he doesn't have two houses behind him.
Yep.
And they pushed that one house as far away as possible, so he has a sizable buffer.
All right, good. All right, so in terms of our next steps on this one, any insight, any thoughts? We know what our goals are.
You know, and the crazy thing is, I don't, I'm not going to try to keep people here all night, but the crazy thing is, by law, you can't force them-
Sure.
-to do these low-impact developments. You can entice them, you know, kind of persuade them, but you can't force them.
Yeah, if we, if we, if we put together some ideas about what the town is looking to see, what the board is looking to see, what the planning department is looking to see, they'll know that they're probably hitting the mark a lot easier when they come in for their requests.
And Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board, I'm talking to everybody when I'm talking. I've had a real good rapport with Peter Blanchett, because one of the most important aspects for the building inspector, he's the person that's supposed to determine the lot yield of properties. So when they come in with a plan, I want to put 20 lots here. Technically, is by statute his job to look at the lot yield. Are those lots that are being proposed contiguous upland, meeting the minimum lot size and frontage requirement, right? So they may want 20, but he may say you only have contiguous lot size and frontage for 15 lots. So that's the max build-out. That's important for him to actually do that, because he has that zoning authority to do so. So that they may want 20, but the, the max lot yield turns out to be 15 lots in accordance with our regulations. Then they can design an open space development for 15 as opposed to 20.
Sure. And, yeah, I mean, you did say in the interest of the time, I think if we go one by one and go through these, and, you know, I think tonight would be a good night to sit there, determine if this is a priority, and then quickly come up with the next step, and think about who owns that and what we'd like to do. So I'm going to ask for some input on Tim, because I think that, again, Tim's a wealth of experience. Is there a next step? Do you feel that we, we can take on this action?
Well, I think the next step should be gather information so we all kind of understand what low-impact development is, other than, I mean, it's, it's a concept, but there are some, some definite techniques. So, I mean, that would take, you know, take a while to put that together.
Okay.
It would be, I don't know, maybe half-hour training. I don't know if that's something that we might be able to ask our PC to do, to come to one of our meetings.
I think the good thing is, I mean, I know Mr. Cashwell, and like he said, was this is something they already talk about at the meeting, so we know that this isn't something where we're missing the boat on, but if we can tighten that up, and it makes it better for the town, I think that that's where we can look. Why don't we, I'll put that as an action item to actually look into some more information about low-impact development, find some research on it, perhaps at a, at a later meeting, present sort of a plan on what we can do there. I'll just keep us moving, though, so that we don't get down the rabbit hole on every one. So going to the next page on WR7, the first one's ongoing. It's a planning board plus other board of selection and Conservation Commission. Any feedback on that right now?
No, I should, maybe I'll go through these ongoing ones and write up a-
What's going on?
A brief summary of what the ongoing activity is.
Okay, excellent.
Yep.
On to WR7, adopt land use regulations requiring a vegetative buffer along all surface waters. This seems like that's an offshoot of the low-impact development. It doesn't, doesn't have to be in development, but definition around surface waters, but I think that if we look at it, that we can actually gather information through, through researching that other, other strategy, then that would help on there. Any other responses on that?
Yep, I mean, it's, some of that we did with the new, what, after natural resources-
Protection.
Protection ordinance.
Excellent. And would that take into account WR8 as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I thought this was an interesting one. WR12, the key on that one is green snow pro certification, promote participation. So we're not requiring. If you think about it, we all grew up in a generation where the road always had snow on it. You put snow tires on and you just got where you went.
Changed.
We get two inches of snow and they're dumping tons of salt on the roads, and, you know, everybody thinks that it's got to be bare or else you can't leave your house. So we know that's an impact to our environment. Can we promote the certification in an effort to decrease salt use when, when the general public expects the road to be, you know, pavement at all times?
I think actually Danny and his crew actually do that already. They have for a few years.
Already did it.
Is there? Okay.
They've changed it.
All right, so, so we think that we're already have achieved this goal or this mark?
They're working on it.
Any other feedback? All right, we're moving along. We are going to go to page, it is 68, 60, it's going to be page 70, if you look in the bottom left, in the Placow implementation box. Update master plan with potable water system update, CF16. That's a planning board and water consultant responsible agency, and that's a 2021 date. Again, that's a who and a when sort of situation. Does anybody have any feedback on that?
Is that this documentation of like where the potable water system will be?
Yeah.
How that's being done?
That's what I would think. We have the, we have the, the board, right, the commission for the-
Putting it into the-
Okay.
The GIS system.
Yeah, so it seems like that would be the responsibility of that group, likely not on us. I think that's a document we might as well have our, get our hands on and just review if we need to. All right, moving along. T5, under transportation, consider it, and adopt, consider adopting a town-wide complete streets policy to, so that we can accommodate all modes of transportation to the highest extent possible. I guess I was curious as to what, what this actually entails.
How broad do we think this, this covers? Is this electric cars and that type of thing?
True.
No, it doesn't, complete streets, the concept behind that is to look at each, at each street in town, determine who uses it. Obviously, cars and trucks use it, pedestrians use it, bicyclists, and so the complete streets says you should make accommodations for all of those uses. I mean, you can't, can't do everything everywhere, but it would be helpful, I think, to, particularly along Main Street, I would say, maybe more than others, to see what we want to do there. So we know we're working with New Hampshire DOT on the section of 125, oh, 125, sorry, Main Street from Dustin Ave to the library, and so some of the, some of the comments and suggestions made early on, although we didn't use the phrasing "complete streets", the comments were very much suggestive as to what would be in a complete streets.
Okay.
So this is more, I guess the more of the concept here is to actually develop a, a written policy that says, this is what we want our streets to look like and modes of transportation we want to accommodate.
Now, would that include sidewalks as well?
Yeah, yes.
You know, I've, I grew up near the high, or not grew up, I used to live over by the high school on Cottonwood, and could never understand why we didn't have sidewalks coming out of the high school. And I know there's a lot more to that, but would that be something this would address? What's that, Greg?
They're really expensive.
Yeah. Well, I said a lot, I was, money is a factor.
Does this also include bike lanes, which doesn't necessarily require sidewalks, because there, there are some places where there is no sidewalks. We don't have a complete process through the-
Right, yeah. All right, so, I'm sorry, Karen, go ahead.
Just one more. Where does this all fit in on trucks still using Main Street? I'm going through, where is that going to fit into one of these on roadways? I mean, that continues, it just amazes me how many now are just cutting right through.
And, well, I don't want to get off on a-
No, I know, I didn't want to.
But until the town is willing to step up and maintain Main Street by ourselves, so we have, so it's a local road that we can control, we're subject to the New Hampshire State DOT regulations.
Okay.
So, like, I don't want to-
All right.
-get off on that tangent, but-
I'm sorry.
I mean, there are places where we can limit weight and so forth, so, I mean, there are some things that you can do, but- So, I mean, there are some things that you can do, but
Okay.
Can I, can I ask Tim a question on that?
Sure.
Could we take ownership of that portion you just mentioned from, what did you say?
Library.
The library to Dustin? Could the town take ownership of just that section to help cut down on trucks?
It wouldn't be able to go through.
I, I don't know for sure. The problem with taking a kind of a slice out of it is, you know, now you get somebody on a state road and then all of a sudden the laws change because you're going into town. So my guess is we either have to do from, from the Haverhill line to
Get to give us
To 125 or Sanborns, you know, I mean, a whole section, or, or not at all.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good question, though.
Yep.
Mr. Cashwell, did you have some commentary?
On that particular issue?
Well, we could be here all night on anyone, so, yeah.
I think we all have opinions on it, right?
It's a tough one. You know, when you do look at it, it seems so inappropriate that it's a fairly major truck route, especially when you have 125. But, you know, they're going up 108, continuing through out to Atkinson. They're on that particular street out here because their GIS system is telling them that's the quickest, fastest way to do it. And, you know, not that any of them are constantly doing it, but there's so much trucking associated with this area. And, you know, this is one of those routes they can take.
Does the state ever restrict weight on their roadways? Or do they say, hey, this is, it's our road and
Some of them are pretty big.
It has to be this weight?
Yeah, I mean
And I guess who owns that sort of, you know, try to
Massive, massive political lobbying effort, but, you know, the interstate commerce protected, you know, it's like the tree harvesting industry or the lumber industry. They go by their own set of laws that are on the books. And it sets a lot of people, but there's really nothing that can be done unless you change those laws. Those are hard to change in interstate trucking laws because those are public rights away, you know? So they have rights, even though, you know, 18-wheelers going through here and it's really residential primarily in its setting.
Yeah.
It's not set up for these big 18-wheelers that just look like, you know, Goliaths going through and Godzilla at times is so big. But, you know, they have the rite of passage.
Well, Karen has proven that she's committed to some efforts, right? So I just marked her down as this was Karen's. But, you know, kind of bringing it back to our master plan at T5, so the complete streets policy is really, the action is to develop the policy, correct? To write it?
Yeah.
And so I think that
Mr. Chairman, there is incredible amount of information on complete streets
Go ahead.
On the internet. You know, I know everybody here has probably driven into Cambridge where cars are secondary, you know? So you've got to watch out for pedestrians, bicyclists. They park cars in the middle of the road, there are parking lanes in Cambridge. So you'll come up to them and you'll be behind the car. Why isn't this line of cars moving? They're parked there. They literally have parking lanes in the middle of their roadways.
And the bike lanes on the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you
What are you hoping them?
You go crazy trying to drive in these complete streets.
So I think you guys can inform me, but, you know, you know better. We write this, say we write a policy, right? We research it, we all agree that this is a great policy. Then what is that policy? Where does it go? Does it have any weight? Do it, does it go to election? I think that's kind of my question.
Now, to transform roadways, you know, and the ones that Tim alluded to, you know, the appropriate roadways into complete street roadways, with this infrastructure bill coming out of Washington that's being discussed, there's supposed to be a tremendous amount of money that's going to be allocated for transforming because it's all about money. These are very expensive transitions. And what we will need to do, as well as the whole state of New Hampshire, is to be ready to grab hold of that transportation money that's coming this way. And it will be assigned to create complete streets. A lot of it's being assigned for bike trails. You know, this is nationwide. They're putting billions and billions into this whole transformation of complete streets. The town's responsibility, I would say, is to get ready for that part of money that's going to be utilized for those communities that are aggressive in setting themselves up for these transitions from these roadways now to complete streets.
John, that's a great point. Thanks for mentioning that. You know, when I looked at this, I looked at it myopically as kind of what's on each page. But within that, I think that does put this as a high-priority item, now that you mention that. I don't know if you guys agree as well.
There's other things involved, like
Yeah.
Is it going to be a 90-10 split? Is it going to be a
Sure.
70-30? You know, the higher the percentage, the higher the local cost is going to be.
Yeah.
You know, I've been involved with some of these towns in these sidewalks with, you know, 24-hour-a-day engineering. You know, if there are contractors on the job, an engineer has to be there. That adds an incredible amount of money to the cost of building a per-foot sidewalk. You know, in Hudson, we were dealing with $300 a foot sidewalks when we could do it locally for, you know, one-third of that.
It's the government for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Talan, is there any, has there been any discussion at the Board of Selectmen level on any sort of outlook on that scenario and any feedback?
No.
And do you believe it would be something that the Board of Selectmen would want to see and prepare the town for in this aspect? You know, if there are government funds that suddenly become available and
We're looking, the town manager is already looking at the bills that are coming out. And the biggest question is not how much money, but how the federal government's going to allow us to spend that money. And that has not, that has not hit the roadway yet.
Yeah.
So even though they say, here's a whole bunch of money, but you can't spend it.
Yeah. Well, and then the other consideration, if you look at the, you know, like the PPE loan status, right? It was kind of like who got in there first and got the money. So if we're not prepared, you know, it could go elsewhere. And I think that, you know, we can contribute to some things like this that will help the board, help the town manager and anybody else involved in that
Box looking very, very closely, I guess. Especially at the current state of the budget.
All right. Does anybody want to take sort of a little bit of a research position on this one and maybe report back? Is that sort of a typical ask at this, for the board? Yes, Mr. Cashwell?
Yeah, and I can't underestimate, or understate, the need for the town to figure out what road improvements it would like to implement and actually work towards designing those improvements. Because when this legislation comes out with the money behind it, it's going to focus in on, you know, do you have a shovel-ready project? And the only way you can have a shovel-ready project is to put up the design money for it. So those communities that are aggressive, they know that trick. We utilize that in Woburn, you know, 35 years ago. And everybody used to say, well, how do you get these projects done? You know, we're trying to get them done with the state. Well, we would put up the half-million dollars to design, you know, a bridge or a roadway intersection. And that's how you do it, acquiring rights of way. People don't realize it. You can't get anything done because at the local level, the local government is responsible for acquiring the easement rights. If there's any easements that need to be taken to improve a right-of-way, and easement rights and acquiring them is a very arduous legal matter that has to be negotiated with the property owner. It's not a simple thing to do.
Yeah. Now, you know, it's, this is coming from someone, the person that wasn't on the planning board a year ago, which is that intersection, when we transition from Haverhill to Plastow on 125 is, you know, it's two different states, two different towns, and it's just a heck of a lot of problems for Plastow. So I don't know, which, like you mentioned, it would require some local taking and
We had a situation in Woburn where Boston, believe it or not, owns land in Woburn and Burlington. And Boston, Boston, to this day, you know, 60 years later, is still failing to work with us. It's improving an incredibly congested intersection, just because we can't, we can't come to a term or sit down at the same table. So these easements are really, really difficult to deal with, but they have to be done at the local level.
Well, I'll keep this moving. I think on the T6, this is pretty similar. You know, complete streets and green streets, I think that they're going to be kind of in that same lump in the sense that how is it environmentally friendly and so on? So, and it may be, may mean bike paths and things like that as well. So, again, is there anybody that is interested in doing a little bit of research on that and bringing that back to the board?
I, I'm willing to do that for sure.
Okay. And I'll do some as well, so. All right, excellent. All right, last page, I believe, yes, is T9 under strategy. That is also part of the transportation, I believe. Better educate the public on how they can access public transportation and all the economic, social, and environmental benefits. Is this even a factor for us? As far as I know, we do not have any public transportation in town unless I'm just not knowledgeable.
I mean, one simple thing, I mean, we know the, one of the Haverhill buses stopped at State Line Plaza forever.
Yep.
About a year ago, every now and again, it seems like they're also stopping at Market Basket and the Staples.
Yep.
Certainly not that they had to inform me that they were going to do that, but all of a sudden the bus is there. I don't remember seeing anything in the paper or
No.
I'm glad they are.
Yeah.
Right.
But if people aren't aware of it, it's probably not, as many people would take the bus.
We have a designated spot, I believe, next to the Chinese restaurant, next to Shaw's, is that correct? Maybe a little sign?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know about it elsewhere. And then what's our responsibility? Is it the board's responsibility or is it a simple, you know, let's put it on the website, the plastow.com website?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, for this year, I mean, we have a lot, a lot on the plate, but just that simple notification.
Yeah.
We've tried a few times to get the bus schedule. I mean, I know it stops at State Line. I don't know, some of them go down 125, a lot of them come up North Ave.
North Ave, right.
But where the endpoint is
Yeah.
I don't have a clue. Now, we haven't, I haven't called the bus company and said, you know, where the heck does your bus go? But it
And, and, you know, you think about with the clinic down by the gas station there, forgot the name of it, but, you know, would they ever come for healthcare setting, especially for, you know, elder affairs and whatnot? I know that Haverhill's got their own, you know, walk-ins and whatnot as well, though.
We could write the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, which is the, on the other side of the border, and see if they know what the schedule is or have any input. That would be just a simple letter. And I'm sure we'd get a response back. Might be the, response might be, we don't know, but
I can find that out.
Sure they would respond.
Aren't you on, aren't you on that?
You don't know already?
I'll find it out tomorrow.
What good are you?
Yeah, so we could talk to one of the commissioners.
So kind of pulling the things that Tim's saying and that John was saying, we really should be thinking about what we would like. Where would we like that bus to go and provide opportunities for us to go to the bus company and say, we would, these are other spots within Plastow that we would like the bus to
Yeah.
And that's, it's kind of like thinking about, well, what do we, how do we want it to be?
Yeah.
And part of that complete street plan basically says the same thing. It says there are things like crossings, safe crossings, there's transportation stops, all these types of things that it makes up. We have to sit there and say, well, where do we want them to stop and where do we want these things to occur? And then when money is available, if the planning board already has these opportunities, this is where we would like money spent. I think that's, that's a great way to get ready for
Sure.
If there is bucks coming
You're sort of insinuating it could be a corroboration, you know, collaboration between, you know, Haverhill and Plastow to say, hey, if you extend your service within our community, because at some point they'll say, well, this is funded by taxpayer dollars, why are we even in Plastow? It's costing us money, that kind of thing. So, yeah, that's a, that's a great point.
You know, and this, this is a huge topic too, equity for mass transportation. I mean, it's just like the big buzzword. You know, they want people to be able to get on the buses and utilize them to go from where they live to where they work, to where they shop, you know?
We don't have the infrastructure. I mean, we all know that there was a train, you know, situation a few years back. That being said, yeah, we do not own or have any state or local transportation that I know of unless we do anything for the elder affairs or for the elderly community. But, yeah, all right, that's a good point. So John, you'll be able to look into this stop and then
Yeah.
I mean, Greg, what's, what's your thoughts on, on the, you know, the next steps about talking about how do we expand? Can we expand? Is that a planning board responsibility or is it
I think part of it is, is if we're going to come up with a complete street plan for Plastow and pick a particular roadways that we are most interested in.
Do that.
It's just being able to state what would we like on them? What kinds of things would we like? Do we want bike paths? Do we want bus stops? Do we, whatever? And basically define that as what the vision is of what you want Plastow to look like. And that, I think, helps, helps understand, oh, these are the needs, these are the things that we wanted to put money into. Does that make sense? I mean, that's
I agree.
Coming from the planning board is your vision is the vision of the planning board to what Plastow should be looking like.
Yep, all right, great points. All right, we'll move on to the last three items. Land use, FLU-3, complete a corridor study along Route 125 to reimagine the land use and transportation pattern of the district, some of what we were just speaking about. I highlighted this will create an opportunity to create a more efficient and sustainable development pattern that serves the needs of Plastow long into the future.
I think that's part of the two zoning ordinances that we passed, the C3 district and the overlay district, that were a direct result.
Yep. And I, so I've got some thoughts, right? So I lived in, grew up in Massachusetts, went to school in Boston, lived in Atlanta and several different towns around the city for a few years, and then moved to South Florida. Again, lived in a few different towns down there. And then came all the way back up to Plastow 17 years ago. So with that in mind, I saw a lot of different communities. And you go to some of them, and some of them are just cookie cutter planned, but some of them are beautiful and have aesthetically pleasing continuity. And, you know, sometimes when I come through this town, yes, I love the small-town charm that we have, but I also recognize we're growing, we're a border town. And we have some inconsistency. We have an old building that looks like this and it's not even in use, and another one here, and then we have the businesses that are attracted to Plastow. And that's what goes through my head when I drive through town, is how, how do we as a board, again, good point, Tim, C3 and the overlay districts will help direct some of what goes in there? But do we have the opportunity to require? If you go to Hilton Head, South Carolina, everything has got to look the same, whether it's a, whether it's a gas station or a, you know, a sub shop. Some people might not like that, but it looks nice. So this is my thought about the So, this is my thought about the town and what land use should look like and what, how do we get there? And I'm kind of throwing that out there because I think you have a lot more experience than I do with, with some of that. So, this would mean, I think this is the thing that I was thinking about for this year, that as a board, do we put in more warrant articles?
Not to be facetious, but, you know, if you have a citizen such as the Tuscan Kitchen owner, who happens to purchase 150 acres of land and, you know, has put together a multi-billion dollar project, that's one way to transform a community and create that catalyst because that's going to have such a spin-off effect for that entire corridor in, in the years to come. So, down here, we're going to have water very shortly. That's going to help greatly. And there is the absolute potential, you know, depending on how serious the town wants to get in pursuing sewer connection with Haverhill. But, you know, that's not pie in the sky. That's, that's something that could happen if the town wants it to happen, especially sewerage for that corridor. And those two utilities being introduced to that particular area can really transform it in the manner that, you know, real estate developers will really start to look at it and put a master plan together, working with the town. You know, it's developers working with the town, you know, because the town ultimately has the authority to permit everything or not permit. So, you know, it's a, it's a collaborative effort and what the town can do, working to implement those two utilities in that corridor and then going from there. I said this from, I think, the first meeting I was here, two and a half years ago, that, you know, that's this town's economic development future in a, in a sense that will help expand its tax base, take some of the burden off of the residents, you know, because that's, that's one of the biggest goals for any community, is to try to take that revenue production burden that provides for all the municipal services. If you have a strong, strong commercial base that helps alleviate those costs, those tax bills from ever increasing. So, you know, if we really focus in on that 125 corridor as being the economic development future for the town, that's going to help lessen the tax burden, that's where the focus should be.
Sure. I'd like to see some nice redevelopment as well and I'm, you know?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's really my thought.
But at the same time, Tom, is to be able to protect the residential scale and character of all the neighborhoods. So, you have a strong commercial base that creates traffic, whatever that goes with it, but it creates the revenue production that helps to lessen the burden on the taxpayers. But at the same time, when you have such a strong commercial base, it lessens the impact on the residential neighborhoods, that they get to stay in their, you know, their, their state of tranquility, peace and quiet to the extent possible. You don't want to impact any of the residential developments, neighborhoods.
Well, I know we were kind of creeping in on two hours, so I'll keep this along, but I think that that, you know, to me is a major point of emphasis for our team, for our board, excuse me. And so, if we start thinking about 10 and 11 months from now, what our draft warrant articles are going to look like, I think that's one of the areas. It could include all these other things we talked about as well. And so, we'll hit the last two. FLU-6, site plan review standards to improve visual and ecological quality of commercial development. That was a little bit of what I was just speaking about. Uniform aesthetic standards, that kind of thing. And then FLU-7, strategic conservation and green infrastructure standards. I think, again, that's sort of in that same boat. So, all right. So, we've got a few things to work on. I think we, I think the, the two biggest things are, number one, what can we do as a board to help the town establish itself? Should there be an influx of infrastructure, revenue, taxpayer dollars coming in? Position ourselves so that we're ready for it and take advantage of it. And then two, how does that fit, fit in with our overall strategy for the town? And what, as a planning board, do we want to help direct that direct, you know, that, that vision for that along with the master plan? Any other input? Mr. Cashel?
Yeah, those last couple, FLU-6 and 7?
Yep.
Those are, those are really practices with every application that comes in here that, you know, we're already doing. I'll give you an example with that self-storage facility. I think this board worked really well in trying to enhance the visual appeal of the buildings themselves, but to also increase the landscaping, you know, to break up that building impact, that visual building impact, setting it back, creating landscaping, softening the exterior lighting. So, a lot of this stuff that makes all good smart growth sense, we're practicing. And that's what we've got to continue doing, you know, enhancing those landscapings that are part of every project and, you know, enhancing the, the exterior lighting, trying to tone down or tamp down the amount of traffic associated with it, trying to keep as much traffic off of 125 by interconnecting driveways within sites, going from one site to the other, as opposed to everybody having to go out to 125 and further congest 125.
Mm-hmm. All right. Great. Any other thoughts or feedback? Anyone? Yeah, speaking of that site, you know, you look at the town websites as a barometer of people's feelings. There was a lot of excitement when they saw the groundbreaking and then a lot of, a lot of interesting feedback once they heard what it was. All right.
Under construction, it always looks terrible.
Yeah.
The end product.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, moving along. Let's go with the, I think we can look at this quickly. The planning board's schedule for the upcoming year. I want to get some feedback. I believe by law, we're required to meet once a month. So, you know, that puts us, and I think we typically do about 10 months or so of, of two meetings a month. Are there any dates that anybody has a question about that we may want to sort of adjust publicly now and move on? Yes, Karen?
Well, I mean, the dates here are the typical public hearing dates. So, they're, they all reflect the third Wednesdays of the month. So, the, I mean, we're missing the workshop dates.
True, true, true. Good point.
Which, I mean, this is fine because, you know, it gives, also gives when the applications are due. So, it's, you know, serves a good function, but...
December 29th.
We should, we should probably lay out the workshop meetings.
Easier to identify which months you don't want to have a second meeting.
Well, yeah. And in, in my mind, I was thinking that I would be okay with a December 1st meeting, but maybe not December 15th.
Oh, I thought it was 29th.
Well, you've got to be careful in December because we're cracking on zoning and whatever.
True.
So, I mean, typically, we don't meet the first Wednesday of the year. I mean, because often the first, the holiday itself falls on a Wednesday. And we typically don't meet the first week in July. Other than that, if there's things on our plate that need to be dealt with, we, we meet the two meetings during the, you know, during the month.
Okay. For the dates that are publicly listed now, you know, do we want to make any adjustments or do we just want to address our meetings as we go for the first, first week?
You really have to do that as it's needed, but that December 29th one, you know, right after Christmas.
That's actually the application date. So, it's not even our meeting. Our first meeting date would be the January 5th.
Oh, oh.
So, that, our meeting would be December 15th, 2021, and then January 5th, 2022.
So, could you provide us, Tom, with, you know, we have these dates here as the Wednesday dates and for our, but also provide us with what you think would be, would be a good draft for the first, the first meeting, the first Wednesday?
Sure. I can do that.
And that way, we have a whole list of dates and we can have, we can see where, where we're not scheduling things. And as Karen was saying, if, if you need it, we, we can put it in place, but it's nice to be able to see ahead of time where we're, where we're going, what we're doing and what we have scheduled.
Yeah. And I'm comfortable with the idea that, you know, the midsummer, there's going to be a lot of vacations. We may not even have a quorum, whatever it might be. Not that we'll necessarily, well, yeah, for workshop stuff, we don't necessarily need that for votes. So, either way, yeah, that sounds good. I'll put, I'll put that together and provide that.
That's good.
And then we'll use that more as a guideline with the understanding that we can adjust as needed. And, all right, so that's that. Old business. Is there any old business to discuss? Mr. Cashel?
Well, this draft motion that Dee has in regard to the regional planning.
Okay. Yep, that's part of the new business section, so...
Business, excuse me.
No, that's fine. We'll, I'll definitely have that down. All right.
So, was that really necessary? I, I was going to give this bill to Greg Colby. The invoice got sent to Francine, so I could just take the bill and, and bring it to Greg Colby and say, we need to pay this.
Yeah. I think the one aspect that we would have insight on or input on is, you know, the board traditionally makes a recommendation to the board of selectmen.
It's part of the budget.
Yeah.
So...
Are we still, you know, I, I don't know why, but do, you know, do we do a formal vote on the recommendation?
You were going to make a recommendation not to, not to fund it? Then that might be necessary, but otherwise, we should just pay this bill.
Yeah. Do you want it on public record that we voted to approve it? I mean, is that...
I think in our, and I think, I think in our procedures...
That's fine.
We take a vote on it.
Okay.
Isn't that in our procedures, Tim?
Yeah, and it's just a recommendation.
Yeah.
There's no authority.
Yeah. It can't hurt, I guess, at this point. So, should we roll out with a vote to recommend that we, do we need to do a...
So moved.
Yeah. Do we need to do a formal, you know, statement on the recommendation to approve this and second it and do a roll call?
So, you want to do, do, I recommend, I moved that we recommend to the board of selectmen that the 2021 Rockingham Planning Commission dues be paid in the amount of $7,756.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
Karen Rhodes. Charlene, roll call, please.
No, we don't, we don't need to do a roll call because we're all here.
All right. Good points. Good points. Thank you, Tim. New guy.
Been waiting all...
New guy alert.
Been waiting all day to do that.
Been to do that, huh?
New guy alert.
Just a simple all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Opposed? All right. Passes. Recommendation passes, 500. All right. I think this is the section where we could potentially discuss things on public record. Of course, we don't want to give any of our opinions or insights because it could be in a future application. Is there anything to discuss, John, with regard to the project up in Kingston that was voted upon by the planning board and approved? Is there any other business? I think that it was noted that, yeah, is there any other business that you would discuss at this point?
You mean, anything?
Yeah. Anything you want to talk about within reason.
Dee wanted me to make sure everybody found this and that all the amended language for the town meeting is in here in red. And she also wanted me to make sure that, please let the board know that I have ordered OSI Planning Board Handbooks. They haven't come in yet, but as soon as they're available, she'll have those to board members.
Has, has everyone signed up for the training, which is a couple of weeks from now? I don't have the exact date.
April 19th.
April 19th, thank you.
I want to sign up for that.
I know that some of you have done this training. I'm not sure that it's a requirement.
Are you referring to the planning?
Yes.
The, the state-sponsored?
Yes. No?
No, no, not the one on...
You're talking about the town?
The one that Dee sent out?
One in town, right here in the garage.
Oh, that's a town one, okay.
Yeah. And there's going to be two sessions of that, both the same. So, you pick one or the other. Highly encouraged if you do have the time to attend.
So, how, how do you sign up? April 19th?
I just emailed Dee, I believe.
Yeah, just, just get ahold of Dee and she'll make sure you get signed up.
I just said, I can do this date, and she said, great, I got you. What's her email address, something like that?
Okay.
And then the other one is the spring planning. It's on a Saturday. I think it's May 15th or thereabouts.
That, that's on TV.
It's, it's going to be virtual.
Yeah.
It's not in person, obviously, but, you know, if you happen to not be doing anything that beautiful Saturday in May.
I've got graduation.
That's the trouble. You know, once these real nice days come by and we waited so long, it's, you know, it's a hard thing to do. I always try to encourage them to have that particular session in March.
Yeah.
When it's cold.
That'll be, so I think I'm signed up for that training, but that'll be the one where I finally realize that I don't have to call for a roll call when we're all here, so. That's, that'll be my takeaway.
You learned a great deal. That's the number one training program offered by the state. You get a lot in one day.
Yep. No, I look forward to that. I do. Any, any other feedback, John? Any other additional applications coming forward or anything else that you can speak of?
You know what? There's plenty of activity behind the scenes, but again, it takes a long time for plans to emerge, you know, for submission purposes. I, I can say that Mr. Coleman McDonough is planning on finishing up the application to submit to this town for that sliver of land that happens to be in this town, and the vast majority of it is in Newton. So, you know, we'll be dealing with that probably within a month. It's been tough negotiating with the person relative to making sure the plans specify what he's applying for and, and nothing beyond that.
Okay. Yeah, if that comes before the board, I'll, I'll be recusing myself. I'm in a butter to that property, so.
It, it really doesn't look like it'll, at this point, it's not going to have anything to do with development in Plastow. It's just rearranging lot areas and the subdivision that's being proposed, that's all in, well into that property in Newton. And it's nothing that gets close to our town or in our town.
Greg, was there any, did the, did the board of selectmen vote on those two properties that were up for town sale?
That will be voted on, on Monday's meeting.
Okay.
And what about the second hearing? That's a date, I think, April 12th?
Isn't that Monday? Your Monday meeting?
My Monday meeting, April 12th, yeah.
That's when they have the second hearing.
And we'll wrap this up. I just have one other question. I want to kind of put this out as a regular conversation. If anybody's got any agenda items or anything that they think is important, please let me know. Feel free to say it now or reach out to me. I'd be happy to include it on our agenda in the future. Any other items? All right. Meeting is closed. Do I have this correct? At 8:35?
There you go.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.